Welcome to early work session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, January 24th, and the meeting is called to order at 7:05 PM or 6:05 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. Item number one on the agenda is receive a presentation and discuss the city's legislative program for the 88th Texas Legislative Session. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I need to find the remote so I can do the PowerPoint.
Put an air tag on it.
Hey, Chief, I need another one of these. Thank you, if you don't mind. He got one. What's wrong with me? You don't like me?
Can we focus?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, he's ready to go, so, you know, let's...
I'm sorry.
It is time, once again, for the Texas Legislature to meet. The 88th session started just a couple of weeks ago. And as normal, we put together a legislative agenda that we pursue during the session. So, to get started, and I think everybody remembers some of this language from last year, the overriding goal for the city is cities are the level of government that is closest to the people it serves and therefore are the level of government best able to identify the needs of a community and appropriate means to address those needs. While state government should be a resource for cities, decision-making authority should be placed at the municipal level whenever reasonable. And that's really been the theme over the past several sessions, is to make sure that local governments have that authority and it's not taken away, so we cannot have the ability to make those decisions closest to the people. I did add a new statement in the session this year, and it is essentially the City of Highland Village fully supports any legislation that enhances the local decision-making authority to govern properly and fully fund services and adopt and enforce charters, ordinances, and building codes necessary to plan and provide for growth challenges. There really is not a whole lot of change from the past session, and I don't want to go through and read every one of these, but if you see all those bullet points there, those are ones that had been in the past. Legislation, of course, can pop up at any time that may affect some of these, and so what we try to do during the session is monitor that to make sure something doesn't surprise us. Again, there's just a few others right there. I will mention the very last one there. There has been a move to limit the way cities can communicate with their legislators, particularly with using Texas Municipal League to do that. And, of course, we still support that legislation that allows the local government officials to be able to communicate with our legislators. This is one new one. It's actually a slight modification. In the last session, this just said, "Support the repeal to House Bill 2439," which does prohibit us from really regulating building products and materials and methods for construction. I don't think there's an opportunity that this would be repealed this year. There are, there are having some discussions about making some changes or modifications to give cities a little more flexibility and options in regulating that. Again, with the revenue and online sales tax, all of this is really the same, to make sure that redirecting existing local revenues does not happen, that it stays with cities. Of course, we have had changes to the appraisal caps. There are some moves, again, to make some changes to that as well. We'll certainly be looking at those. And there's only one new one right there. There has been some discussion about legislation that if, for instance, when we issued certificates of obligation this year, that goes under our debt service calculation for our property tax. There has been a thought that that should be included in the M&amp;O side, and we would certainly oppose that, because that would really change the way we do business. Public safety, again, most of these are all the same from last time, and if we want to go back and cover any of these, we can. Only one was added, and this was to support state funding to improve public safety wellness with an emphasis on suicide prevention. And if you've looked at the numbers of suicides with police officers and firefighters, it is very high. So, anything the state can do to help fund programs to lower that is certainly worthwhile. In transportation, those were all the same that were there last year. I will point out the first one, which does involve Interstate 35. Of course, parts of Interstate 35, that construction is occurring now, but the second phase, we do want to make sure there's funding so that those improvements can continue. And going over to water, everything there is the same, and when we get to parks, everything is the same as well. So, if there's any of those you all would like to talk about, we can address those. One thing that's different this year from the last session, of course, it was during COVID. We did not have Denton County Days. That is coming up this year, so what we generally would do is take this plan when we meet with our state representatives and senator and provide them with the information that we're supporting. So, hopefully, most of you on council can attend that. It's March 21st and 22nd, I believe, so we'll be getting information out to you on that shortly. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have or any suggestions.
Could you go back to the second DCTA slide, please?
This one or the next one?
Next one.
Okay.
That one.
Yeah.
Just go to the next one. Okay, right there.
Did it on that one?
Go back.
Okay.
Okay. The bullet point at the bottom is the one that we kind of talked about a little while ago. If I'm not mistaken, that was deleted from last time? If it wasn't, it should have been, because we asked for it to be deleted, but I believe it was, and somehow it showed back up in here, and I believe the mayor saw that as well.
Okay. And I did look at what we'd published last year. It was still in there, but if that's something we want to remove, we could certainly do that.
Okay. Well, I know we talked about it, and it was needed to be removed, so somehow it didn't happen, but it needs to be removed.
Yep.
In my opinion.
My opinion as well. Anybody else?
Since I wasn't part of that conversation, can you elaborate a little bit on the reasoning?
Well, the idea, the idea behind it is, and this has been an ongoing discussion with this council and many, a couple behind it, about how we're not getting everything out of DCTA that we should and that we should have every right to based on the amount of taxes we're giving them. Also, the fact that there's a large community of American Airlines and Southwest Airlines employees whose livelihoods depend on using short-haul flights that live here, and I don't really want to spend any tax money or my money on DCTA or some kind of light rail system that possibly endangers those jobs and those citizens. And, like I said, I don't think we have anybody that works for DCTA. I may be wrong, but I know we have American Airlines and Southwest Airlines employees that live here, a lot of them.
Well, and I'm of the mind, if you look at the specific verbiage here, "state investment in public transit, including regional rail service." It's one thing if cities want to come together and form something like DCTA or DART and use their sales tax revenue to fund that operation. I don't want the state coming into it and getting involved in it, because that means the state's going to, is going to want to have a lot more management of it.
And eminent domain everything.
Yeah, and, you know, that's big government, and I don't want that. I'd rather keep it local.
And unfortunately, as you know, we spend, what is it, about a million four? We give a million four in sales taxes every year to DCTA, which we don't really get any big benefit for, whereas our neighbors to the south get a lot of benefit. And unfortunately, as our council has told us, we're stuck like Chuck due to Texas State Department Code or Transportation Department Code, so I don't want to do anything for them. I agree.
Well, thank you for the history and the context.
I think that's a pretty fair consensus? Okay. Anybody else on anything else? All right.
Mayor, we'll put out, this is an action item, so when a motion is made during the action item, if there's just, that's included in the motion to remove that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Item number two, discussion of comprehensive plan updates draft. Mr. Stevens, you're up again.
Second verse, same as the first. We had this discussion at the last city council meeting. There were a couple of questions that came up that we want to address specifically. One was Opportunity Area 1 and some of the numbers with regard to sales tax and property tax revenue, so we want to address that. Also want to talk about Peninsula Park a little bit, and then just a general overview. So, Ron, I'll turn it over to you to take that.
While he's coming up, I just want to add, I wanted us to have this discussion again because, for the benefit of council members Hessleb and Kixmiller, who weren't here previously.
I did watch it.
But you didn't get to talk, so now you get to talk.
I was sending a text.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. It's great to see everybody here this evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Ron Stewart with McAdams, 218 South Clearwater Highland Village. And as we continue to move towards the finish line, we did want to answer a couple of questions that came up last time. A question that came up after the meeting that Mr. Stevens alluded to wrapped around Peninsula Park. So, with that, Randy's going to start us off with the OAP 1, a very brief discussion of OAP 4, and then I'll move us into Peninsula Park. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you, Ron. Hi, good evening. Randy Rivera, land planner, 213 Lake Vista in Highland Village with McAdams. So, two weeks ago, we were here. I'm glad that you were able to watch it online. I love that that's accessible for folks. And we had a discussion about the, you know, the change that you'll see on the screen that was different from last night, last time, is the fiscal impact summary, the estimates that we used for, you see the five-year total in the table to the bottom left, the last column there, based on four different scenarios. So, we drilled into those numbers with Catalyst and with the city, and we looked at what was, what estimates and projections were used to come up and arrive at those numbers. And so, we were able to clarify that question last time about what is included in that $8 million number that you, if you recall. And so, the programming for that 8.4 million did include the more intense scenario that is mixed use with the high density. It did have elements of medium density, components of medium density, but it was predominantly the high-density scenario. And so, for, if we just looked at mixed use with medium density, it's the 3.5 million revenue over a five-year total. And so, the difference there, if you recall, we talked about the values generated from a higher-dense development versus a medium-dense development is about 2.8 times greater. And so, those numbers really reflect that difference. And so, we were thankful that both parties were able to get together, look at those numbers, and drill down to be able to answer those questions. And so, the question coming up is, what is, if, you know, if we're looking at mixed use with high-density and that, you know, isn't preferred here, then what is being left on the table? And so, that difference is the 2.8 million. So, I welcome any questions around that if you have...
Sorry, would you repeat what you just said one more time? Mr. Feaster was distracting me.
Oh, no. Let me see if I can do that again. The question of if high-density mixed use is not preferred, what is being left on the table? And that's what that number reflects, is the 8.4. Medium-density, around five years, 3.5 million, if it were high-density, that same time period.
That's the top-line revenue? That's not net after our services and...
Yes, sir. It is not net. It is gross.
Do we know what our net would be?
We really don't, and, of course, one thing that was recommended is to do a fiscal impact analysis any time a development came in, which is vitally important. There are so many factors, depending on how this is developed, provision of fire service, would that be something that we could share with another community that's nearby? There's a lot of things like that, but as far as a hard and fast number on that, we do not have that.
Estimate? Because I think, because I think it's key, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're estimating that it's going to cost about $6 million to bring in sewer. So, if you just look at the number, and I'm just picking, please don't take this the wrong way, but I'm picking out the mixed-use high-density number of 8.4 million. So, if our services, our expenses are 2 million, that means that we net out 6.4, which in one year pays for a developer to come in and take care of that through incentives. So, I think it's essential, unless you guys disagree with me, to kind of get an idea of what that bottom-line number would be, if we can just guesstimate it. Am I shooting at the wrong target?
We would have to make some real assumptions to come up with a number like that. Of course, there'd be a lot of variables, so...
I think you would be just shooting at the dark, you know, trying to come up with that number, because you have really no idea what could be proposed.
Right.
Okay. I think these numbers are, have some assumptions around it, okay? But when I look at development, there are money the city would have to put in. Personal view is the developer pays for that. Anyone coming in, if they want sewer, it's got to be in their investment, not the city's investment, okay? If they need something more, it's in their investment, not the city's investment, okay? Because that way, we don't have to factor that in. They come in and say, "Here's what I'd like to do." Then we can come out and say, "Well, this is what it would cost the city to support you. Are you willing to pay for that?" Because I think Mr. Levitt, you know, he's had a precedent in the past. We've never underwritten development in the city. We haven't offered concessions.
Right.
Set-asides, tax abatements.
Okay.
I view that the same way on anything that we do, okay? If it doesn't pay for itself, okay, then the city doesn't do it. That $6 million, you know, I don't see any council ever approving that without...
John, I'm just, I'm just using that as a...
Oh, no, I know, but I mean, it's to the point of, you know, trying to make an assessment or make an estimate, you really won't know.
Well, and I don't want to, I don't want to take, honestly, I know that the city has done business a certain way with people coming in for a long time, and I've said, since I ran for council the first time, that I think those days are gone. We're in a competitive market with our neighbors, and nothing should be off the table in terms of trying to negotiate the best deal for our city, for a business or a development. You know, and I'm not saying that, you know, you automatically approve an incentive or a tax abatement or something, but I think, you know, I don't think it's, I don't think we're in a place where we can certainly rule it out anymore. But the other thing I was going to ask is, when we were at TML, the breakout session that pretty much all of us went to, I think it was the City of Fate, their presentation, they did show some development costs, I guess, a cost of service, you know, development per, cost per acre, you know, for this or for that. So, were the numbers that they were showing, were those just spitball numbers, or was there some accuracy to it? And if so, is there a reason why we can't have that here? I think I've asked that question before.
And I'd gone back and looked at what Fate does, and really, one of theirs is more of the long-term infrastructure costs, that that's really what they try to estimate with regard to your future street repairs, water lines, and things like that.
Okay.
Is what they look at.
I swear, I remember, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, Paul, that's kind of where I'm going, is our services, you know? What do we think? I mean, it, to me, you can kind of, based on the definition here of what we're talking about, you know, does that mean that we have to, that Chief Reim has to add two more policemen? Does that mean that Fire Chief has to add? We have to build another fire station? We have to buy a ladder truck? I mean, what does that mean? Because the gross number is one thing, that's great, but really, what is the net? And to Dan's point, I agree. We're looking for ways, innovative ways, to generate revenue. I agree with Dan. There's nothing that's off the table, in my opinion. So, I just, if there was a way where we wouldn't have to spend man-hours and just wasted time doing it, it would be nice to know a, kind of, our best guess.
But are we spinning our wheels until...
Is it best to leave that as something that is, if a developer comes in with a concept, to leave that as a part of the collaborative effort between the developer and the city to come up with those numbers dependent upon whatever they're...
Yes, sir. That would be the fiscal impact analysis, would show cost of service and revenue.
And I think you did include that in the, in the table at the end, right?
Yes. Yes, and that's a, we're recommending that be a requirement for any development in the OAPs.
That's right.
Because the closest we'll get with any kind of rough ballpark without spending, because Jason Claunch looked into with Bureau Veritas that did the Fate stuff, they looked into, you know, kind of the man-hours behind that, and it was thousands and thousands of dollars it took to come up with those. But the closest we're able to get with that kind of rule of thumb is the 40 cents, you know, the, it's 40 cents to serve from a city standpoint, retail, commercial-type use. It's a dollar forty from the city to serve a residential-type use.
Right.
So, I mean, that's kind of the closest we can get with it without doing a very more drawn-out process and coming up with the numbers.
She did, and just to clarify, when she presented a couple of weeks ago, she, at the end, and you may want to go to that, the table at the end with those recommendations. There are a number of recommendations that there, that they have added of things that we should be, we should seek from a potential developer, such as the cost-benefit analysis.
It's pretty long.
Or what is it?
That answers my question, because...
For residential?
What was that based on?
Per, I think it is per unit. Per unit, yes, sir. I do have that in here. Sorry, I'm going to have to flip through a bunch of slides to get to the back. I wish I could just...
There you go. Wait, no, that's not it.
Yeah, park action items, trails. Okay, so here is the implementation matrix for Opportunity Area plans, and the chart on the right, the last two rows, I think, are the most, ones that we want to highlight. The second from the bottom there is recommend a fiscal impact analysis for future development. And that would review the impact against the city policies outlined in our OAPs. We would look at, or any applicant coming in would have to come up with their program, and that's why it's hard to come up with that number, because we would have to, okay, there's going to be this many units and this much square footage, and make some assess, or assumptions that the city was comfortable with to be able to even perform that analysis. So, we're leaving it to the developer. They know, they're going to know what they want to do when they come in and make a proposal. And so, based on their program, they can come up with that detailed analysis to show it is expected to generate this much in revenue over a certain period of time through all the revenue types, and it is expected to cost the city service this, that, this amount for that same year, same time period. So, that you'll be able to analyze that in a closer, with a closer lens per application that comes in. But the chart that we're having, that we're proposing in the OAP sections sets the high mark of, it is expected to generate revenue. This is a vital, you know, property of the city. It's the largest remaining undeveloped tract, right on the lake, right on the 249 corridor. We expect it to generate a good amount of revenue.
I would have one caveat on the impact analysis.
Yes, sir.
Is that the developer doesn't prepare it. Developer pays for it.
That's true.
We order it, and we control who does it, not the developer. But that's for the future.
That's a, that would be a good recommendation, that you would select the firm to do that? Okay.
It'd be totally independent of the developer, and it's who we pick at our sole and absolute discretion, and they're going to pay every dollar for it.
Right, right. Yeah, third party that the city contracts with, the developer pays, that seems reasonable.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Very welcome. So, the other question, I think, on OAP 1 was removing the uses, the use summary. We talked about that a little bit last time. And, sorry. Okay. And so, the use summary does, you know, it's still with office, retail, mixed-use, medium-density. So, the vital components of a comprehensive plan include land use, transportation, open space, parks, and removing the uses out really doesn't help convey the vision to potential applicants of what the city collectively has for this property. So, I think it would be misleading to applicants if we took that out. In land use practice across the state, it's expected that your comp plan include land uses, and I don't recommend that we deviate from that. So, I just, that's the reasoning behind putting that there. Of course, applicants will come in and have discussions with the city, like we talked about last time, to understand what it is that the leadership would support, the certain types of uses or program that the applicant is considering, to bringing that forward to leadership, to get a consensus on before they move forward with an application. So, they'll still do that. They do it all the time. And having the uses in there kind of helps guide them with what the vision is, and something that, when you all have those meetings with future applicants, you can point to and say, "Look, we, we wanted medium-density. We didn't want this, or we wanted this instead of that." So, it gives you something to be able to go back on and point and show, this is what we wanted as a city, as far as land uses go. Any questions on that?
The, the conversation came up, and I think because we looked at Area B, and I questioned the medium-density residential and the level of potential revenue that could be generated from that piece of it. And the answer came, you've got mixed-use, medium-density. So, if I looked at the way these are written now, we could essentially eliminate the bottom line, the 8 million, because we're not doing, we haven't opened this up to see what the developers will do. the developers will do. We've restricted this to medium-density.
I would agree.
Right?
The bottom line in the chart.
We're at three and a half at this point, right?
Yeah.
And that was really the point I was trying to make. What are we giving up? So if we, if we limit the verbiage and we restrict the creativity of a developer, we stand to lose a potential $5 million in some form or fashion. It won't be all of it, because I don't think anybody on council wants the type of density that was originally put in the plan, and we've had that discussion. But just saying medium-density residential puts us back to the category of three and a half million.
Yes, sir.
In potential revenue. And that's where I had the heartburn last time, is the restriction, not allowing that developer to come to us and say, I think we can do this at this level, whether it's medium-density for the cost of what he has to put in, or a higher density, and then we restrict it at that point in time, whichever council is sitting here, right? My opinion is, I'd like to see us remove medium-density, just leave it residential. Let them come to us and decide how they can make it work just on Area B. Every, Area A, we can't do anything with. It's, it's too small of a piece of property to do anything.
I, I don't really think, though, that removing medium-density makes a difference, because whoever comes to us with a plan, or future councils, it has to be approved. This isn't a zoning...
I agree.
This isn't a zoning. So I would be more apt to leave medium-density in there, so that, correct me if I'm wrong, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we take anything out of here, like, let's say we took medium-density out, and then Dan Jaworski down the road comes in and says, hey, he wants to develop medium-density here, well, it doesn't conform with our comprehensive plan. So do we have to go back and rewrite and revisit all this again to allow that to happen?
No, you really wouldn't. As you said, it, it is not zoning. And normally, what would happen with a comprehensive plan, if a zoning comes forward and it doesn't quite meet the comprehensive plan, but the council supports it, that you would just amend the comprehensive plan at that time of adoption, so...
Then it's a moot point.
Robert?
I would agree with where Tom was going with that. I would leave medium-density in. Any developer looking to develop this is going to recommend whatever they think can pencil, and if it's high-density, then they at least know coming into the door that they're going to have a tougher fight with higher-density, right? So medium-density is a, it's a guide for anybody to just, a 30-second glance at this property, oh, they're only allowing medium-density. If they're really serious about developing, they'll come in front of the city. And if they're not, and it's too much of a stretch for them, they'll go somewhere else. So I don't really think we're limiting anything by keeping medium-density. All we're offering is a recommendation of where we're at as a city possibly being comfortable there. I mean, there's, this is, there's no restrictions we're putting on this, other than a...
That's it.
Piece of advice, right? To a developer. So that's how I see it, so...
I agree. Anybody else down here?
And we also have Jason Clonch from Catalyst. He's here and can talk to the fiscal estimates that we have included in this presentation too, if we need to get into more detail.
I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. Okay. What's next?
Okay, I'm just kind of... Okay, so opportunity area four, the other, that came up after the, the meeting last two weeks ago, was that we had on the map previously a star in the top-right corner, and it identified a potential location for a site amenity. Still requiring a site amenity in this opportunity area, there should be an amenity that creates quality development. But we've took, we took off the actual location so that it could be flexible and move around as the layout permitted. But whoever comes forward with an application, shall have a site amenity component in the land plan that they present.
I apologize for asking, it might be in the text, but by amenity, are you meaning like a small neighborhood park, or pond, or...
It, it's left open to the city to interpret that, what they would like, what y'all would like as an amenity, but also a proposal from an applicant to make what they think, and to have a discussion around it. It could be a focal point, it could be an open-space area, it could be a pond.
Just something not residential.
Right, that's correct.
But we do agree that, as we've discussed, this property won't work zoned SF-15. So whatever developer comes in, they're going to ask for zoning change. It won't work as a, as an SF-15.
And again, we're not restricting anything. If they want to fight that battle, they can fight that battle, right?
Well, it would require zoning change, correct, Paul?
Correct.
It would, it certainly would. And if you look at that opportunity area of number four box with the fiscal impact, that very last one, and I, I can sort of see that, proposed future land use plan, that number there would be a change in zoning with the smaller lot, as you had suggested.
Okay.
Seven hundred sixty-nine thousand.
Need binoculars.
Yeah, it's small there. So that, I think that is all of the updates on the OAPs, and then I'll toss this back over to Ron about Peninsula Park.
Thank you. And I don't remember who asked the question about the amenity, but typically, because we know it's going to have to have some detention-retention to meet the state requirements, typically, instead of just having that there, that can be turned into an amenity with a trail around it, and maybe a little pavilion or something. So they can't just put in required engineered detention. That would be one opportunity for the amenity. On Peninsula Park, through various meetings with the Park Board and different meetings after that, the Peninsula Park, it was, felt like, needed some clarification. And it has, it does show up historically and currently as a park, but we wanted to clarify that the land is owned and managed and maintained by the Corps. The city, and Phil will be here, Phil's here to answer any additional questions. The city has leased Corps land, particularly at Copperson Pilot Knoll. That's all solidified with documents, and recently, all of those documents have been, I think they're finished updating or in the process of updating. But we have a whole lot more shoreline than just, just that. And for the most part, the remainder of the shoreline is not within a lease to the city, but it belongs to the Corps. And by that, as I said, they, they own the land, they maintain it, and they manage it. There are areas along our shoreline that we know about that people are utilizing, but those areas are not necessarily maintained by the city. And so we wanted to clarify that. Oops, that's weird.
Time's up.
You nuked it. Now we have to start the comprehensive plan all over.
Here we go. We, and so that y'all would know, any changes that happened over the last two weeks, the, the star was put in in that note that you saw, and we are going to add a couple of words to it. And then we also added this. Additionally, the City of Highland Village will review options and opportunities to expand the U.S. Corps of Engineers lease to other areas along the lake within the city limits that may start to meet some of the expectations of some of our citizens that just assumed, because there's a little parking area there, that that belongs to the city, when in fact it doesn't. And that's the extent of my background, and if you have any additional questions on that issue, Phil can certainly expound on currently seeing what the city's doing to move ahead, and really, some of, maybe, I don't know if Phil is going to get in this, what, what the city's understanding of the financial impacts that some of that would put on to the city.
I would encourage you, as I read through this, I did read this, this is good, good writing, there's, and I mentioned this to Paul earlier, you've got a couple of typos in here, like right here, you refer to the acres of developed parkland at 324.85 acres. Other parts of this, you refer to our parkland at 348 acres. Other parts, you refer to it as 350 acres. So that's something that you guys can clarify.
Okay.
I think it's probably closer to 350 as opposed to 324, so just kind of nitpicky, but...
No, no, that's, that's excellent point, and I think one thing, and we thought we had picked up all those, but this one is obviously not picked up yet. And we can just do a word search on those and then clarify that.
It's ticky tack. And then Phil, for you, and I asked Paul this, the 10 miles of trails?
Yes, sir.
Just clarification. I thought in the city, we had more like 23 miles of trails.
Well, that, that would include private trails.
Okay.
Yep, which would be, you know, the Highland Shores area.
Okay. Okay. And as, as you get into this, I want to be really careful about how we structure this conversation since, because this, the topic of Peninsula Park and its ultimate fate hasn't, to my knowledge, gone through the Parks Board process?
Correct.
I want to make sure that we don't overstep, and I want them to entertain this.
That you are correct. At the last Parks Board meeting, I was tasked with a, with a couple of action items, and one of them was clarification from the Corps, what options we have for lease, and then also getting a quote to understand what the fiscal impact would be, what the cost would be to maintain those areas. And since then, I've gotten clarification from the Corps as to what we can do, and I also have received a quote to provide that assessment, which I'll be presenting in the February Park Board meeting.
Yeah, I would think since, you know, we, we lease a lot of nice properties from the Corps, but we spent a fortune improving them, I figure they would be more than happy to lease us that, to improve it for them, like they have on the other properties that we have long-term leases on. I mean, is there any desire, I mean, do they desire to lease it out, or...
They, they will consider it if we will address the illegal mowing, tree-cutting by residents, illegal boat docks, and unauthorized storing of vessels.
I don't want to, the...
That sounds like a job for the park rangers.
No, the boat docks, the boat docks are on their property, they can enforce it before we do anything, is my, is my thought.
Let's, let's focus on that particular piece of property, though. I don't, I don't think there's a boat dock on that particular piece of property, but it is a natural area, if I'm, and they want to keep it a natural area. Natural trails, they don't want anybody to go in, as you said, and mow it or cut trees down, things like that. They want to leave it as it is now, intended.
Low-density recreation in most of the area.
Right. It's a very pretty piece of property, and we've had it in our park inventory, listed as park inventory, although we don't have it leased. We've had it in there for some time, and I think it would be great if we could, we find a way that we can work with the Corps to, to secure that piece of property for our residents.
Well, is it, in the, in the current comp plan, is it actually...
No, it's not. And it, it was removed from our park inventory because we don't manage it or maintain it.
It's in the master plan, the last master plan was in there.
Yes, that is correct. It was in the last master plan.
So that, that the last, that's the master plan we're operating under today, correct?
Correct, but it's removed from the website.
Okay. What are the limitations of use on that? Because I've always thought, until this discussion, you know, earlier, that, that that was part of what we had. Does public, is there public access to that 10-acre island or peninsula?
Yes, there is public access within the homeowners' association.
Okay. So I mean, but people can go down there at will, just like any of the other shorefront property, they can walk it without trespassing on anyone?
Well, that, that's where it gets a little sticky, and where the clarification of understanding what the impact is would get into those details. If it's, if it's, if it's been, if there's an agreement in place with the homeowners' association to allow access, then what does that look like? Is it just for the HOA, or is it for the public entirety of Highland Village and other people that would come into our community? And that I don't understand yet.
Phil? What about walk, oh, excuse me. What about walking on the shoreline trail today? That's Corps property.
Correct. The Corps property is a Corps property. You are correct.
Right. So you can start anywhere that has access to the Corps property and walk all the way around it.
Correct.
Without trespassing.
Correct.
So if you access the peninsula from the waterfront...
Yes.
You can do that all day long.
Yes, you can.
Every day, without any impact. So the only question is, is whether you can park on Tree Haven and then walk down that path.
Correct.
What that access is. Because that's HOA property.
Right, and we, we found out in the preliminary investigation, there's other areas through the HOA that have access points, not just there.
Okay, right. I'm just, I'm just trying to get, paint a bigger picture.
Right.
That if it was left natural, we do nothing. People can still access it today. They can walk the shoreline, they can walk the island, spend the day on it without any repercussions whatsoever.
Yes, because it's Corps property.
Right. I mean, so that's one, where we could look at it without doing anything, our citizens have access to it, with no liability on the city.
But the HOA just owns the pass, they don't own the property.
Correct.
Correct. Well, that's one thing that we would need to investigate and clear, and have a better understanding of than we do today.
Because I can't see how the HOA could own paths that are on Corps, that are on Corps property.
And it's my understanding, that path, that path does come to a termination point...
Yes.
Where there was posts and, and, you know, ballards and a cable that you weren't, that people weren't meant to cross, and the cable has since been removed in spots that allows access, correct?
Right. We're talking about two things here, you know, the, going back to what John said, the, what the Corps owns itself, and then the access points, which is in HOA, within the HOA community. And then who manages and maintains those access points up to the limits of the Corps property.
But are the access points actually in the deed description, the legal description?
That's what the further investigation would, would identify.
Because the, the parking lot that's down there, who built that? The developer?
I, I don't have that answer today.
Okay, because I do know that there, they've, some of the residents down there have been, built benches out there, they've built chairs.
Yes.
I mean, it's kind of like they act like they own it, so...
That is correct.
That's one of the issues. Talk to Tammy.
Okay.
Okay. Now, that, that clarified my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
The, the verbiage that we've got in here, I know we're limited on what we can do, because we really don't have any, we've still got a lot of investigation to do, right?
Correct.
Is this, is this going to also be a part of the Parks Board direction to pursue?
Yes, I'm bringing this information, including what is written in here, to Parks Board next month.
Okay, and then they can take it from that step and try to move forward and bring it back to us for solidifying...
Yep. They'll provide a recommendation, which I'll bring to council.
Okay.
It's council's decision on how I would proceed.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, Phil. And that pretty much concludes any changes from two weeks ago to today, addressing some of the issues with Peninsula, and then addressing some of the financial uses on OAP 1, and then the last was removing a specific location for an amenity on four. So if y'all have any more questions about these, or any lingering things, Randy, Jason and I are here to answer any additional questions. And other than that, I'll turn it over to you, gentlemen.
So, Paul, I guess my question at this point is, are you need, are you collectively needing some sense of direction from, from us about what to do about those outstanding questions?
That certainly would be helpful, and we would like to be able to, of course, to adopt a new comprehensive plan, we do have to have a public hearing.
Right.
And any ordinance takes two readings, so we would like to be able to schedule those and, and get that done, so...
So for, for now, that, you know, in the next 40 minutes, if we wanted to use it, we need to answer, what is it, three questions, I think?
what is it, three questions, I think, basically? To provide some sort of sense of direction to finish the product?
It would be to leave the language in for Peninsula Park. Is it okay with y'all that the specific location at OAP 4 was removed?
All right, so timeout right there. Council, I mean, anybody got any thoughts about whether or not to take this proposed verbiage out or leave it?
For Peninsula specifically? No, let's leave it in.
I think leave it in.
Next.
Okay, great. Is it okay that we removed the location for the amenity at OAP 4, although we kept the requirement for an amenity in?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Let the developer decide.
Okay. Wow, this is great. And probably the outstanding question really for the last three months. On OAP 1, are we okay with still having the four financial categories on tax revenue for OAP 1? Although, as I believe Mr., why did I say Brian? I'm just going to say Brian, that Brian pointed out is essentially that last one is not empowered, but it is giving its informational, the 8.4. 1, 2, and 3 are all currently empowered if the comp plan goes through. And then what was the other issue on OAP 1 besides, oh, that we leave the use language in as it was two weeks ago? And really, we, two weeks ago, we, I think, tweaked one or two words, but essentially it's been the same. So two issues on one, use language and incorporation, and then the four categories of tax revenue projections.
I'm okay with that.
I would leave it as it is, but that's me.
As it was presented tonight.
Correct. Okay. There you go.
There you go.
Okay.
Mike?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all for your time and look forward to, three weeks is your next meeting on the 14th.
Yes.
Unless you postpone it because your wives want you to be home for all of them.
Oh, no, we're going to have it that night, so, and we're going to encourage all the residents to go out to dinner that night. Just kidding.
I'll leave all that to you, Mayor.
All in humor. If you don't have humor, what do you have?
That's right.
So do anything special we need to do, or is it just like a...
No, what I go for would be then, would be to schedule the public hearing on the 14th.
Okay.
And then that would be the first reading as well, then the second reading on the 28th of February.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you all very much.
All right. Item number three, clarification of consent or action items. Listen on today's City Council meeting, agenda for January 24th. Anybody have any questions or clarification on anything that they need? Nope? It's not like it's long, so...
Clarify the action agenda.
All right. So with that being the case, we will close out work, early work session at 7:50, is that 3:00 or 4:00?
3:00.
7:53?
6:53.
6:53. I'm on Eastern Time.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting for Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. Meeting is called to order at 7:30 PM. Let the record show that all council members are present. And at this time, please join Deputy Mayor Protem Kixx Miller in leading the prayer and the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon the families and of all in our city. Thank you for the members of Highland Village's family who continue working selflessly to ensure the health and safety of our community. We pray that you be with them as they work on our behalf. Recent tragedies remind us that the safety and security we hold dear can be shattered. Our continued efforts to safeguard our community is the highest priority of all who serve. I pray that our mayor, council, and all members of our city staff continue to serve with dignity and respect for those who have shown confidence in us. In your most blessed name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and effective flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Next, we move on to mayor and council reports on items of community interest. City Council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations, or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, information about community events and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anybody have anything they want to report? I'd like to, I'd like to give a shout out to Marcus High School Cheerleading Squad. They won, they went to Nationals this last week and won, they were the national champions. So it's good on them for their hard work. There are several of them that are Highland Village residents. So congratulations to them. And then I want to share that we had a boy, our local Boy Scout troop that sent an invitation to any of us on council that wanted to come and talk to them last night. I did, I accepted the invitation, went and talked to them. And for those of us who have our doubts about the future of our, of our society, the Boy Scouts that I talked to, they, they certainly reinforced my optimism for our future. A group of 10, 11, and 12-year-olds, and they had fantastic questions, great group of kids. So I really enjoyed it. So any, with that last call, anybody have anything they want to share? Other than that, the next thing we have is Major Dwayne Durham from the Salvation Army. Our Salvation Army is going to hear, is, is here to give us the results, I suppose, for the Red Kettle Channel, Challenge?
Yes, sir. You know, the last time I was here, you asked me about the mayoral challenge for Red Kettle. And so today, tonight, I get to report on that.
You get to tell us how much we lost by.
And I have with me a colleague, David Feizer, who's a development specialist for Salvation Army in North Texas here for Collin and Denton County. So he's my support tonight. And we thank you, Mayor, for your leadership in the Red Kettle campaign and the mayoral challenge. City leaders, we thank you for participating. And anyone else who was participating in that, we very much appreciate it. So we had, of course, the other mayors from Lewisville and Flower Mound and Bartonville that joined in on the challenge. And so we do have a certificate for you, of appreciation for you for participating in that.
That doesn't sound good.
And I'll give you a little bit of a report of how things went with that. So just remember that these funds that are raised during this time, this Christmas time, Thanksgiving time of year, are vital to the work of the Salvation Army as we seek to help people to be stable in their lives and prevent and, and support people who are homeless and try to get people housed and people away from addiction and all those things that we do. So we're happy to report that we had some wonderful results for your efforts. So your team ranked first in the number of bell ringers on Saturday, Saturday, December 3rd. You had 13 volunteers that day. So we thank you for leading them. And you ranked second in dollars raised during the in-person bellring. That's in front of the store at $1,060.45 that day. And where, do you remember where you rang? What location?
Walmart.
Walmart. I just want to tell you, that was our best location for the whole season.
Wow.
So your team ranked second in virtual Red Kettle donations, totaling $337 through the generosity of six donors there. And then all efforts combined, Highland Village team ranked second in total dollars raised with $1,397.45. So we thank you so much for a successful campaign. But we certainly owe a debt of gratitude because your efforts inspired other mayoral teams and they recruited 42 volunteers and 23 donors to raise, or 23 online donors, to raise a total of $6,089.79. So that was a total for the, for the mayoral, mayoral challenge. Very much appreciate you and your efforts and that you're bringing help and hope to people, our neighbors in need. So you help us help people who are like Sam and Donna, who are both in their 80s and just needed, they're on a fixed income and they just needed some extra support. And, you know, the last time I was here, we were seeking some grant money. We thank you for awarding that. And these funds help to pay for things like prescriptions and helping with food and utilities and those type of things. So their lives are transformed because of the efforts that you have put forth. And we are looking forward to, you know, that people keep saying about how many days there is till Christmas, right? But we're looking forward also to this, this year's challenge. Thank you all so much for stepping up to the plate and helping us. And I want to tell you that we have merged, I think I may have mentioned that last time, in, in Lewisville, we are all in one place at 880 Fox Avenue. And so please give me a call and let me know when you might like to come and tour and see what's happening with us at Salvation Army. Thank you so much and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'm not sure what to do with this right now, but I'm supposed to present it to you.
I will come down. Well, yeah, do you want, did everybody want to come down? Chickens. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Council challenge.
So who was the winning city? Lewisville, right? Cheated. Well, I'd much rather come in second to TJ than Derek. Thank you. I'm glad we could contribute. Thank you.
So, so was Lewisville ahead?
Yeah, yeah.
Did I have that on here?
I think it was about $900.
Yeah, I didn't have their.
Weren't they using both Walmarts at the same time?
Yes.
Oh, that's not fair.
They're five times our size. So, okay.
No, he was only.
We will have a, we will have a.
Everybody only had one location.
We will have a stout plan of action for next year.
My grandfather would say, good, better, best. Never let it rest until your good is better and your better is best.
There you go.
About 2,000, my friends.
So it's about 700, y'all were 700 under Lewisville. So the difference is the virtual kettle. So the virtual Red Kettle, so they raised more online than they did at the Kettle. And so that's what kind of, so that's.
We'll be ready for them next year. Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to number nine, city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens, anything to report?
Mayor, just a couple of items quickly. Wanted to mention the Chapel Hill Trail Extension. We are waiting the work to be done across the railroad, but we're expecting that to be completed the end of February. And the Highland Village Road Sidewalk Project is essentially finished. There's one section where a bridge will have to be fabricated. And we're expecting that to be installed by the end of February as well. So just wanted to make sure you had those two updates.
All right. Anything else from anybody else?
Could you give us a brief update of the 35 intersection?
I was hoping to get an update from Tex Dodd, and we, we did not get one. They had been doing base work in the first layer paving, so they have got to be very close.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 10, visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address city council must complete a speakers form, which I have some, and return to the city secretary. And according to Texas Open Meetings Act, city council is restricted in discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. I think we've only got one, one person wishing to speak, so I'm not going to worry about the, the time limit so much. Mrs. Nury? Or you got one more? Okay. So we'll go with Mrs. Nury first.
Are you tired of seeing me?
No.
Gal Nury, 4003 Brooks Court. Over the past four months, the citizens of Highland Village have tried to inform you of our objections to the comprehensive plan. We do not feel that is a vision of the community, but rather a vision of a few people. We have heard from people who have requested a financial update to the cost of Highland Village, not just the revenue. Thank you for coming up with that cause tonight and at least addressing it. We have heard about the flood zone that makes the hotel not feasible. We have heard from a police officer about the possible problems of clientele living in the apartments that would be so close to an unguarded park, which would be Puyanore. We have heard from citizens who moved here to get out of Flower Mound in Lewisville. We have heard about potential problems by the EPA. We have heard about traffic. We've heard about the loss of nature. By the way, we were talking earlier, if you drive south on 2499 from Corinth, you cross over those beautiful bridges, you see all the nature, all the water, all the landscaping. It's gorgeous. The entrance into Flower, or into Highland Village, the medians, beautiful. If you're driving around Highland Village, the medians, beautiful. Unfortunately, our parks are not visible. So you don't see that area. You don't see the nature. Drive north on 2499. You have that beautiful, and you know, welcome to Highland Village, and then you have concrete shops. And coming up 2499, you have the backs of shops. You have the back of LA Fitness. You have more concrete, more shops. Coming in from 20, coming in on 407 from the west, you have the shops. You have more concrete. Coming in 407 from the east, you have shops. You have more concrete. Our beautiful community, our land, our nature, our trails, you don't see them. The most beautiful part of our city, visible to people who are just driving through, are our medians. That's not right. Our gateways, east, west, and south coming into Highland Village are concrete. Our vision coming in from the north is nature. That's what you want to try and protect. So anyhow, we've heard about all these things. I have a new argument for you. Education, my passion. According to the data that was collected, the community, what the community likes about Highland Village, low crime was number one. Good education was number two. It was 67% on your survey. Area Wa, Area One is proposed to have 400 units. That's just a number that's being thrown out right now. Area Four is 115 homes and possibly 280 units at the shops. So let's take randomly a quarter of that number of new children coming into our school systems. That's 285 new children. That is 285 hours that takes teachers to do intake of new children. You have to assess. You have to look at their reading groups. You have to look at your math groups. That is 285 hours that teachers are using from conference periods or from instructional time that your children, your grandchildren are not getting because they're doing intake on new children coming into the, into the area. When you have children who have special needs, that's an additional time taken. It usually incurs a one-on-one. So you've got probably 140 hours in lost instructional time with your children. If a new child has special needs, and in Highland Village, if you look at the data, Highland Village Elementary, Heritage Elementary, and McAuliffe Elementary, it is 20% the special needs. Now, that can be as minor as speech, 504 services, it all comes, comes under that umbrella. That is 20%. So now you have an additional two hours per child with special needs where the teacher is meeting with support groups, they're meeting with additional curriculum people. Mr. Kixx Miller, you have told me when we met that you have family who are involved in education. Ask them how much additional time it takes for children coming in. 285 children coming into this community, but the majority of them will probably go to Heritage. The apartments would go to Heritage, Brooks Court would go to Heritage, Bishop would go to Heritage. The 115, I think, will probably McAuliffe, but I'm not real sure on the zoning on that one. So that's another 12 hours of teachers not spending time planting, planning or teaching. Educational Weekly, August 2016, wrote, "Generally, students lose three months of reading and math each time they switch a school." So now you have the potential of hitting your accountability. That state accountability for every school that has to put in, if you're looking at that accountability of children who are moving in, that mobility rate counts. So I went ahead and I pulled up Highland Vill, or I pulled up Flower Mound Elementary. Flower Mound Elementary has one apartment complex. Those are those apartments that are on Morris Road. Those are not cheap apartments. Those are nice apartments. They have a mobility rate of 12.7. Timber Creek has one apartment complex. Their mobility rate is 9.5. Those mobility rates attach to your accountability. So now you're looking at overall decreasing the efficiency of your schools. You're also looking at the credibility of the schools dropping down. It goes on the accountability report. The majority of new students will be attending Heritage. Currently Heritage has 496. That number might be up or down. I couldn't get a today number. But when I'm looking at that number, that is not an overcrowding number. We're not looking at education at Heritage as new students coming in and creating an overcrowding environment. What we're looking at is what it's going to do to those children. What it's going to do to the education and the curriculum. Ask anybody who's in education, and they will tell you apartments make a big difference in a school. Transient students coming in and going out makes a big difference. Look at the number one school down in Lewisville that has so much of a, has so many apartment complexes, 30 apartment complexes, I believe, are in one school. Those teachers will tell you, there are times, there are years when they have a beginning class and their ending class has one student who is the same student. Do you really want that just so you can get 3% of revenue? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Scott Caldwell.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to share some thoughts also in opposition to some of what we have in the comprehensive plan. We've been speaking about this for a while. I understand that it may be in the best interest of the council to adopt the plan so that we don't have to keep paying for updates. So my comments are a request, whether it's before the plan's approved or after the plan's approved, for changes. As I read through the comprehensive plan again today, one of the things that stood out to me was in the community engagement, the number one value stated by members of the community was nature and outdoors. However, when I look at the plans for the opportunity areas, the number one value seems to be revenue generation. It's hard for me to reconcile why when the community says our number one value is nature and outdoors, all of our opportunity areas seem to be focused on number one value being revenue generation. And when I asked that in the open house, the answer I got back from consultants and. And when I asked that in the open house, the answer I got back from consultants and employees who were there was, well, we need to balance the budget in the future. We've got to chase revenue generation to balance the budget. There are lots of ways to balance a budget. Dense housing is not the only way to balance a budget. You can cut expenses. You can gain efficiencies and optimize. You can raise taxes. As someone who's lived here for a decade and plans to be here for the next three plus decades with my family, I'd rather see a tax increase than to see us chase dense housing at the expense of our community values and the values of the members of the community. One of the other things that stood out and that I've asked about multiple times in the forums that I've gone to is, where is the market analysis showing that there's demand for this kind of development, particularly in Opportunity Area 1? I'd like to see the analysis showing that there's pent-up demand for luxury apartments in the no-man's-land between Denton and Highland Village, surrounded by cow pastures. I have not received any response or clarity on where the market analysis is showing that there's demand for that kind of development. We've got retail office space just two miles down the road in a much more optimal location with lots of vacancies. We've got other apartments on 407 with vacancies. So why would we have in the comprehensive plan, you know, to prepare for zoning in an area that's not even close to as good of a location? That seems like a recipe for a future blighted area with low vacancy. Speaking about nature and outdoors and preservation, the other thing that stands out to me is I think about that community value when I look at the current plan. Right now, it shows pretty much wiping out 26 acres of native natural forest and wildlife habitat. It shows a 30-foot green barrier, 30 foot. That is the width of one mature oak tree. So we're going to wipe out all that nature in a community that says nature and outdoors is their number one priority. We're going to wipe that all out, and we're going to leave a little barrier the width of one oak tree around the edge of it. That doesn't align to me. That doesn't make sense to me. Last is just my own personal experience. I first drove through Highland Village 20 years ago. That was 10 years before we actually moved here. And it felt different. It felt special. My wife's a native Texan, I am not, and it felt different. It was something about the nature. It was about how the community seemed to be built into the nature and preserve the lake. It was the peace and quiet. It was the safety. It was that it wasn't overrun with traffic and businesses. It just felt different. And so 10 years later, when my job moved me here, even though it was a long way from work, we looked in all of the surrounding communities. We looked in Flower Mound, we looked in Frisco, we looked in Plano, we looked in McKinney, and we came back to Highland Village because it felt different. And I could tell that the members of the community and the leaders of the community had been good stewards of preserving this feel of the community. And it was the kind of place I wanted to live with my family. And so we've been here for a decade. That is a very rare thing. In DFW, the feel of this community is rare. It's a rare gem. And I would hate for us to sacrifice that rarity and that feeling for something as common as tax revenue and dollars. So my plea on behalf of me and the community and the other members and my neighbors is to reconsider the plans for some of these opportunity areas, you know, whether it's keeping the zoning the same or seeking opportunities to keep more natural and a green space. That's my request today. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Miller, anybody else? Okay. So moving on to consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and a vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that we may consider it separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Number 11, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on January 10, 2023. Number 12, consider Resolution 2023-3044 approving the city's legislative program for the 88th Texas Legislative Session. Is there any discussion needed for any items on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm just curious, do we need to pull number 12 and put it on action to make the change?
Yes.
Okay. Then I suggest that we pull number 12 to the action agenda.
Okay. So move. So what we'll do then is, anybody have any questions or comments about item number 11 then? Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda that only includes item number 11?
It's kind of like two consent or action item agendas.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda, item number 11 only.
Second, anybody got a second?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Heslop is the second, Mr. Fiester was the first. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to action agenda, we did not meet in closed session, so there is no action there. Pages are sticking together. And so that takes us to item number 12, which is Resolution 2023-3044 over the city's legislative program. Mr. Lombardo?
I propose that we approve item number 12 with the one change of, under the category of transportation and DCTA, to remove bullet point number four, which is the opposing proposed state and federal regulations that would increase the, no, sorry, wrong, wrong one, number four, increased state investment in public transit, including regional rail service.
Okay. So the mayor pro tem with the impressive beard has made a motion. Anybody have a second?
A second.
Mr. Kix Miller was the second. Any discussion on that at all? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Motion goes, was it six to one? It carries. And that takes us into late work session. Status reports on current projects and discussion on future agenda items. Does anybody have anything to report or anything they want to talk about future-wise?
On your update, I was going to ask, on the Highland Village Road, when it's complete, is it going to be a stop sign? Is there going to be a blinky light like they did at Garden Ridge for the longest time, or are they going to go straight with the control signal?
Let me confirm that it will not be a controlled signal. I believe it will be a stop sign as it is now. It will go under, and then, of course, when you go down the ramp, it would yield to the oncoming traffic.
Okay.
Anybody else? If there's nothing else, we are adjourned at 7:53.